This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, can... Does anybody hear me? I'm... I had... It says I have a microphone, but I wasn't hearing anything on my computer, so I called in.
Yeah, I can... I can hear you.
Am I on the phone or the computer?
Uh, sounds like you're on the phone.
My computer has a microphone, but somehow the sound is not coming through the computer.
Well, I have five o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. This is the first regular meeting. And the date is Tuesday, May 5th. And it's the agenda for Savania Township trustees. Uh, Dave, are you on?
Yeah, Dave Simko. I was having a little trouble getting in, but I'm on here.
Could you do the roll call, Dave?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Genowine? Here. Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Crandall?
Here.
Simko, here.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'll move the approval of the regulatory notes for the meeting on April 21st, 2020.
Second?
Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Next item is any deletions or additions to the agenda. Mr. Turner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like me to read out the instructions as well at this time for the meeting?
I think that would be good, if okay.
Okay. Uh, just a reminder, and we appreciate everybody's participation, but participants are asked to place their phones or their computer audio controls on mute after the meeting is called to order. And please unmute your phone or computer only if you're going to speak. Uh, that should really help with the audio quality. And then participants can unmute to indicate their desire to speak uh, during a public hearing or during the public comment portion. And if not speaking, then people, please, uh, place your phones or audio on mute. And then I do hear a little bit of breathing into the phone or background right now. Just a friendly reminder. And at the time the public hearings opened, uh, the chair can ask for the names of individuals who wish to speak, and then the chair can call on those individuals one at a time. And, uh, just a note that I spoke with Mr. Burrell in regards to the phenomenon of Zoom bombing. And if there's anything obscene, then that would be something that the township would be able to control. In regards to the actual agenda, uh, just a clerical note that under the fiscal officers' portion, there will be some minor adjustments to line item numbers in Resolution 89 and 90. Thank you.
All right. Um, I... I think we'll just take the... If someone wants to speak, rather than go through that right now, I'll... I'll ask for any comments as we go down the agenda. First one is the police department. Uh, Resolution 2085, which is to authorize to hire three police officers. And I will move approval.
Second? Hello? Second?
Yes, Mr. Genowine? Uh, Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. All right. That includes any questions for the police department? If not, we'll move on to the road and service department. First resolution is 8.1, Resolution 2083, authorized to enter into a contract for the uplift of a 2021 plow truck. I'll move approval.
Second?
Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Next item on the agenda for the road and service department is 8.2. And that resolution is 2084, authorized to purchase accessories for the uplift two new F-250 trucks. And I'll move approval.
Second?
Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Next item on the agenda on the road and service department is 8.3. It's a resolution number 2084. Resolution 20... Uh, I'm sorry. Is this 94 or 84? Oliver, I see both.
Uh, correct. The item 8.3 is Resolution 2094, and 8.2 was just approved. That's 84.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll move Resolution 2094, award bid and enter contract for the 2020 Savania Township OPWC reservicing project.
Second?
Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Any comments or questions for the road disservice department? All right. We'll move on to the item number nine, the administrator. Mr. Turner? I think the first thing is the public hearing, right?
Uh, correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So I'll open up the public hearing. Uh, let me get the time here at 5:07. And that is the hearing on the Savania Township, City of Savania, Joint Economic Development District, Savania JED, number one. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Uh, I think maybe Oliver, you should give a little background if you can, and then we'll ask for any comments or questions.
Sure. Absolutely. And I do see some hands raised in the video, uh, for interest to speak. But in terms of, uh, the background, uh, that the specific, uh, project to be included within the JED, uh, this was... This dates back to May 7th of last year. And at the time, Oakleaf, um, and Wallach Communities had agreed for the complex on North Hall and Savania Road, uh, to be included in the JED. And this was part of the, uh, concept, which was at the county level, included an enterprise zone agreement. Uh, since this time with that, uh, action being taken, uh, almost one year ago, the city and township have... have worked through the specifics of creating a JED, have been in, uh, contact with the necessary party... parties, and have procured, uh, the services of attorney Don Sanderson, who's on the call right now, as is, uh, Michael D. Carlantonio with Wallach. And so in front of the trustees is the signed petition from the business owners. Uh, this is for approximately 11 to 12 acres. And the...
Okay. I'll send you the information on your phone.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, the contract... Give me one second, please. Uh, the contract would apply the City of Savania's 1.5% income tax rate. And the initial term of the contract would run through its implementation through December 31st of 2024. Uh, it would automatically renew for four additional five-year terms, uh, unless action is taken by either party 180 days prior to the automatic renewal. Uh, any... Any revenues collected through the JED, approximately 10%, would be placed into a maintenance fund, which would be reinvested into the district, uh, under the authority of the board, which would be created. And then there's a 2% apportion, which would be, uh, provided to the City of Savania as the tax administrator. And then the balance of the, uh, revenues would be split on an equal basis between the city and township. Uh, the proposal tonight, uh, to go into effect, it was approved last night by the City of Savania. And concurrence under state statute by the township requires a unanimous approval from the trustees. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone like to speak? And please give us your name, your address.
I would like to be recognized.
Oh, go ahead.
My name is Lauren Sangstock. I reside at 2226 Manoa Road in Toledo, Ohio, but it's in Savania Township. The intent... I... These are prepared remarks, and I'll provide copies of them for the record to, uh, the administrator, Mr. Turner, and to the trustees and clerks after the meeting. The intent and spirit of the JED laws in Ohio, in summary, is to provide a lawful procedure for developing vacant undeveloped property within a township that includes the authority to collect municipal income taxes upon all earned income from new jobs created and net profits generated from that economic development. And it generally requires infrastructure improvements, such as public roads, water lines, sewer lines, et cetera. And also part of it is that you normally don't then annex that property out of the township into the participating municipality. Annexation... Annexation issues between Savania Township and the City of Savania are well-known and have been a point of contention for over 60 years, including several merger proposals between communities that have been rejected by voters. There are many factors involved in any joint economic development efforts. Some result in win-win situations. However, the use of JED laws to promote collection of 1.5% income taxes on earned income of workers and net profits of businesses within Savania Township to be, uh, split between the City of Savania and Savania Township is obviously an attempt to annexation without annexing. There are other issues I find involved that bear further review and consideration here. As an individual taxpayer, my concerns and issues I'm bringing to your attention this evening are the following. The JED district under consideration has considerable development already completed, and it's for senior apartment living. Hardly business development that would be expected within a JED. Further, given the fact that the trustees approved the enterprise zone agreement in 2019 with the property owner developer within this proposed JED area is a little troubling to me as a taxpayer. Providing, uh, enterprise zone agreement for 60% abatement of property taxes for 10 years uh, leaves property owners with... Leave that property owner developer with hundreds of thousands of dollars of abated property taxes. And now a JED agreement appears without a vote of the people that were resolved in collecting income taxes of approximately $43,500 from 125 jobs, or $2.9 million. Here are a few ideas that you need to think about before taking action on this, in my opinion. If jobs are created and estimated to pay only $23,200 annually, is this the best use of economic development for the township? Our average annual salary in our township, $75,000. And therefore, it not make economic sense to pursue full-time employee positions paying less than the national average of $54,000. Providing enterprise zone tax abatements to developer property owners, and then taxing the earned income of lower-paid workers to recoup taxes given away to the... To a more wealthy developer, for instance. It's kind of like a reverse Robin Hood concept. You know, we're taking from the poor and giving to the rich. Just for the record, the tax abatements in... Of this enterprise zone agreement in 2019 did not include any consideration or pilot payments to our schools. Remember, any tax abatements that for someone is going to require that everyone else pays that somewhere down the line. Which properties are next in line to be added to this JED? Perhaps maybe the Renaissance Place? Who knows where the real intent of this deal may lead to? And it's obvious by the documents, I haven't found anything other than just what I said. Great caution should be exercised when implementing taxing policies. And sometimes even the best intentions can lead to businesses leaving the JED district and relocating elsewhere, which would not necessarily serve the township's best interest. Serious consideration is recommended in keeping the big picture of future business developments in the township. What message are the trustees going to be sending to those workers who both live and work in the township? If the trustees are sincere, keeping our township's best interests in mind for economic future of our township, perhaps it would be advantageous to allow the voters to have a say at the ballot box instead of pushing ahead with the proposed JED. This proposed JED could open a whole Pandora's Box of issues in the future. We don't necessarily always see them currently. During my lifetime in government service, I've always paid attention to one guiding principle. You cannot do it... Do something for everyone, then don't do it for anyone. Thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is the next speaker?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do know that Mr. Crosby sent me... Okay.
I'm... I'm struggling with this technology today, but I think I have an okay connection right now.
Okay. We can hear you now, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I apologize if any of this, what I have to say is redundant, but, uh, these are my words. I've... I've missed most of this meeting. Uh, so, um, James Crosby, Bud Crosby, 4500 Block of Westborne. Uh, these are certainly unusual times, and I'm not a fan of this format for conducting government business. But I understand it's the reality of today. This is the first JED contract negotiations between the city and town... Reach this stage. Ohio passed a legislation to ease tensions between jurisdictions concerning annexation disputes. Typically, establishing a JED involves creating funds to establish infrastructure to support development of vacant, unimproved parcels. The state set forth two pathways to form a JED. One is presenting this decision to the voters in an election. The other allows for the contract to be made by governmental procedure. This is the path you have chosen. Currently, this contract involves only one parcel, one owner. Oakleaf Village was built in 1986. They have been a business for more than 30 years. Through the years, the owners have expanded their business. Recently, in support of another expansion, the owner was granted a 10-year, 60% property tax abatement. A stipulation of that abatement requires the owner to agree to this contract. This contract imposes an income tax on employees and residents who have any earned income, all without asking voters to decide. The City of Savania has been described as a first-ring suburb that needs to expand to increase their revenue. I have heard this contract will help to prevent that annexation of properties by the city. And in fact, earlier drafts of JED proposals called for the city to cease annexation of unincorporated portions of the township. This contract shelters from annexation only the properties included in the district. In the future, state law also allows for additional parcels to be included in this contract following a similar administrative procedure. I was present at a school board meeting when a JED proposal was presented to the school board to consider involving the school's properties. I believe other JEDs are under consideration. I see the city remains aggressive in continued annexation attempts. It's understandable to try to be good neighbors and ignore the fact that due to a contract that may provide a win-win-win for the township, city, and business, citizens will now pay an income tax without a vote of the people. Taxpayers should have a voice. I ask you to vote no on this contract. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bud. Any other comments? It sounds like, uh, we only have those two speakers. The... I... I think then I will close the hearing unless someone else wishes to speak.
Did we get any concessions from the City of Savania not to pursue annexation through this, or...
I'm sorry, John?
Yeah. Did we get any concessions from the City of Savania not to pursue additional annexations with the creation of our first JED? Or are we just doing this with blind faith?
And... Well, Oliver, why don't you answer that?
Sure. That's a... That's a great question. And as, uh, as has been stated, the contract would prevent the, uh, properties currently being proposed for addition from being annexed, um, by the city while the contract is in effect. I... I do think that, um, there may come a certain point where if there are other additions to the JED, uh, I... I think it may be possible that once a critical mass is reached, that I think the city may be, um, very open to those discussions. But that'd be, um, based on the number of properties that may come down the road. I know that we've, uh, the township and city have had discussions, of course, about, um, on a case-by-case basis, what that may look like.
But right now, this... The only annexation issue is this site, correct?
Correct.
Does that answer your question, John?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Any other comments?
This has to be a unanimous vote?
Oliver?
Uh, correct. Under... Under statute for this to be approved, uh, at the phase that it's at, uh, without being, um, voted upon by the broader community, it requires three... Three votes by the trustees in approval. And perhaps, uh, Don Sanderson, who's on the phone, can elaborate upon the procedure if the trustees wish.
I mean, I've heard some of the... The two speakers that spoke on this issue mentioned that it wasn't taken to the voter. Would... Would it... In any other situation, would this be taken to the voter?
Uh, if it pleases the board, I may... I may defer to attorney Don Sanderson to explain this.
This, uh, this is Don Sanderson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Coming through. Okay. Very good. Um, this... There, as, uh, one of your residents pointed out, there are two avenues for, uh, creating JEDs. And this avenue is one where the, uh, upon the request of the petitioners, which is the, um, property owner and the business owner, uh, the JED is, um, given consideration or apt to, uh, create the JED district by contract. And that is why the, uh, trustees will need to vote on this. And it does not go to the voters. If it were a bigger district, a district, um, that was being sought after without the request or permission of the property owners, that would be, uh, the avenue where it would be taken to the voters first.
Are there any other comments on the public hearing?
Uh, this is Michael D. Carlantonio with Wallach Communities. Um, so just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the concerns while, uh, some... Some people raised. And, uh, first, I... I want to say that Wallach Communities puts their associates first. Um, and, you know, we've... We've worked out an agreement with the associates to ensure their take-home pay wouldn't be with the creation of this. Um, secondly, uh, you know, Wallach Communities has been part of Savania Township for the last 34, 35 years. Uh, you know, we originally developed the, uh, assisted living project, uh, in the... In the 80s. And then in 2015, we expanded the campus to include a memory care segment. And what we're doing now is realizing that the needs of the residents are also... Are changing. Uh, we're... We're building another independent living portion to the community. Uh, and, you know, the... It's... It's a high-end product, um, you know, and it's meant to serve the citizens of Savania and Savania Township for, you know, many years to come. And, you know, we're... When we created this, it wasn't in the intention to, uh, you know, uh, not, you know, for the tax abatement. It's the tax... For 10 years. Which gives us... Which gives the property time to stabilize, uh, start generating enough income to pay the full amount of the property taxes. And that's the full intention of... Of what we'll do here, uh, once the property is... Fully operational. So I just wanted to give that little piece on...
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing on... I'll declare the hearing closed at 5:25. The next item on the agenda is the resolution approving this contract and designating a Joint Economic Development District with the City of Savania and the Board of Savania Township. And I will move approval.
Second?
I'll call the roll of Mr.... Oh, yes. Go ahead, John.
What... Somebody... There may be comments. I... I don't think from the public, but I don't know if the trustees want to make any comments. I'll start with myself. I'm moving approval. We've been working on this about a year. And I think we've, as one gentleman said, this annexation thing, this doesn't stop it. But I think it's a right move in the right direction in trying to work out limited... Uh, I'm certainly not in favor of income tax in the whole township. But I do think there are certain projects where there could be a benefit to both of us. And I would hope it would lead to, um, working out annexation with the city, although that's not a part of this contract. But this is the only thing I've seen since I've been on the board to try to get this issue resolved with the City of Savania. So that was my reason for moving approval. Any comments from Mr. Genowine?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
All right. Dave, would you call the roll?
Yes, I will. Uh, Mr. Genowine?
Yeah.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. I wasn't able to hear. Did it pass? Or... I did not hear, uh, Mr. Genowine's vote.
I recorded Mr. Genowine as yes.
So...
That's correct. John J... John J? Uh, is... Uh, yes, for you?
Yep.
Okay. So the motion passed. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2086, which is a proposal from Ohio Plan Risk Management for liability insurance. Do you want to address that, Mr. Turner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the annual renewal of the township's liability insurance. Uh, certainly had a lot of support from Mr. Ramsdale, uh, in the renewal process, as is the case each year. This renews the current coverages and adds on coverage for malicious acts, uh, which is a newly offered line. The total cost is $99,967. And from a cost perspective, uh, that's between this renewal and the four before, that's an average increase of 1.02% each year. So you see some, uh, stabilization in terms of the long-term... Uh, long-term rates. And there's just a note, we're continuing to work with, um, with Mr. Ramsdale on potential cyber coverage, uh, which may come in from the trustees at a future time. But, uh, this is the annual renewal in front of the... In front of the board. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move Resolution Twenty Eight Six to approve the renewal, renewal proposal from Ohio Plan Risk Management for liability insurance.
Second? I'm sorry, Mr. Genowine?
What are you doing? What, what do you need from me?
Well, we're voting.
Are you calling the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Resolution? Resolution Twenty dash eight-six?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Turner, would you address Resolution Twenty Eight Seven?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution Twenty Eight Seven would provide the option of a political activities policy. Uh, the auditor of state has previously issued a recommendation that the township adopt such a policy. As we move through this in the evaluation phase, although we found that the initial recommendation from the auditor of state would not necessarily apply to Savanion Township, uh, it, it did bring up some, um, some research that suggested that a policy would be appropriate to reflect existing state statute and guidance from the auditor of state's office. Uh, so this policy has been developed to, one, uh, reemphasize existing state statute and auditor of state guidance, and then secondarily, to provide additional procedures. Uh, its intention is to serve as a way to, uh, possibly preempt issues which may arise. And as part of the development process, the employees and, uh, unions were notified of the policy in accordance with collective bargaining agreements. Uh, just to note that this applies to full-time and part-time employees of the township with the exception of elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll move Resolution Twenty Eight Seven, a resolution adopting a political activities policy as recommended by the auditor.
Second? Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, yes, please.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
We'll move on to the next item, a resolution Zero Ninety-three, Twenty Zero Ninety-three. Mr. Turner, would you address this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this resolution in front of the board would provide, uh, a continuation of an existing agreement with Ren Hill Staffing. Uh, we did have a shortage in office staffing, uh, earlier in the year and used, uh, ultimately, uh, ended up using Ren Hill, uh, to procure the services of Pam Kuntz, who has done a phenomenal job. Uh, this resolution would continue that arrangement through July third, if necessary. Uh, given the current conditions with the pandemic, uh, this would also provide some additional flexibility to, uh, provide some office staffing if the case may arise. But, uh, this, this helps respond to those needs and to, uh, some, some partial schedules that have been established in the, in the interim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll move Resolution Twenty Ninety-three, which is approving the continued use of a temporary staffing agency.
Second? Uh, Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation, uh, by Kim Dunham. She's the general manager of TARDA, and it's regarding the upcoming sales tax initiative. I know I've seen the PowerPoint. Mr. Turner, was it on our agenda? Could people access it?
Correct. It was included in the agenda packet. And then for those who are watching at this time, it is displayed on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I'd like to introduce our board chair, Danny Woodcock. He's going to begin our presentation and, uh, turn it over to me ultimately.
Thanks, Kim. Uh, thanks, everyone. Oliver, I appreciate the help here. My name's Danny Woodcock. Like Kim mentioned, I am the president of our Board of Trustees. I'm just going to get us started here and give us a quick overview, uh, run through our plan and turn it over to Kim, our industry expert, our new leader, and we're really proud to have her. So we'll talk about the current situation of TARDA and what we think a new framework might look like from the crossroads, operations, our fix-it-first mindset, the future and our funding. Next slide, please. Next again. Thanks. So right now, we do over two and a half million trips annually. We employ three hundred and twenty-five people, and we have a thirteen-member board. Um, we have a hundred and ninety-one revenue vehicles. And of those a hundred and ninety-one vehicles, over half of them are past their retirement age, and Kim will get into that a little bit. Um, but we're really proud of our ADA paratransit, our call-a-ride, and our school services programs. Next slide, please. Um, ridership. So most of our trips are workforce-related, followed closely by student trips, job seekers, uh, people with disabilities, senior citizens. And there's a next generation of Toledoans like myself who don't want the cost and hassle of owning or storing a vehicle. And we consider that when we're relocating after college. Um, next slide, please. So our new framework, um, it starts with the crossroads that we're at right now. Obviously, TARDA's been in a difficult situation in the past, and with that came a strong leadership change. Um, now we're going to talk about operations, our fix-it-first mindset, the future and funding. Next slide, please. The crossroads. So right now, um, I don't need to remind everyone that our area is going through a bit of a renaissance. Um, there's a lot of energy in Toledo and the surrounding areas, whether that be business or arts or nightlife. And TARDA plays a critical role through all of that development, whether it be public health or workforce, quality of life, and sustainability initiatives. TARDA continues to impact that regional resilience, including our COVID response that we lead the nation and the state in some of our plans that Kim has implemented. And she'll talk about those in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. So our economic impact, uh, Mr. Genowine and I had discussed this a little bit, but the Toledo Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Bowling Green State University Center for Regional Development partnered with us on an economic impact study for TARDA's impact through operational activity as well as our capital expenditure impacts. Um, I, I did email that in full to Mr. Genowine when we received it in its completed form. But also, we will present with Bowling Green State University's folks next time around, um, a condensed slide deck of this. But the big, big takeaway for us was that fifty-two million dollars in economic output is given back to the regional economy from our operations. With that being said, we asked for an ROI on that. And that ROI was for every one dollar invested in public transportation, four dollars in economic return comes back. Next slide, please. So one of the most important parts of this new vision, and obviously, um, this didn't come as a surprise, but new leadership was critical to this. I've been on our board for two full years now, and I've been president of our board for four months. I come from a business background. I advise companies at the University of Toledo's Launch Pad Incubation, and I currently serve on the Toledo Chamber Board of Directors. Last year, we made a really tough but critically necessary important decision to bring Kim Dunham in, an industry expert. Um, she's been proven, she did a really good job reviving a past struggling agency, and we saw in her the ability to bring in new technology and pivot from a business perspective for the agency. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kim.
Thanks, Danny. So as I had indicated when I met with Council earlier this year, I'm very excited to have the opportunity to lead TARDA into the future. I appreciate the support of our Board of Directors. I see Jim Caldwell has joined us on this, um, on this meeting. Our community that overwhelmingly supported TARDA's property tax renewal last week, our staff, and of course, all of you. Our community customers and businesses deserve an exceptional public transit system. Under new leadership, driven to excellence, and with a bold vision for the future, I'm confident we will succeed. On this slide are just some examples of progress that has already occurred since my arrival. The Hub Project is on hold. We decline the Autonomous Vehicle Project. We've worked to repurpose federal funds to shore up our financial stability. We're paying vendors in a timely manner. We repaired relationships with key community stakeholders, are beginning to expand the expertise and technical capacity of our executive team. I'll touch on COVID and funding later. Next slide, Oliver. Next slide, please. So what needs to change? Let's start with operations. TARDA needs a complete transformation, and these are the key strategic areas that require our attention. We're working hard to build a best-in-class team that can lead a modern and sophisticated twenty-first century multimodal transportation system and drive our success. And I mean our collective success. Great thought has been given in this region already to, uh, intermodal connections that move people and freight, including rail, harbor, roads, bike, and pedestrian. We need to remember in the planning process that public transit is an industry, not an afterthought. We will need creative and critical thinkers who embrace change and challenges and who also have experience in bus system redesign, technology deployment, and customer service-driven focus. As an example, Laura Kaprowski joined our team last week as Chief Communications and Customer Experience Officer. Let me say that again, Chief Communications and Customer Experience Officer. The title alone should give you a sense of my vision for organizational restructure and our priorities. Add to that Laura's experience at Coda in Columbus and as Executive Director of the Ohio Public Transportation Association. Our industry is watching what's happening here in Toledo, and I expect we will attract many more industry leaders to embark on our transformational journey. Next slide, please. An example of bold and decisive leadership during my tenure has been our agency's lead role in the industry during COVID-nineteen. We were the very first Ohio public transit system to enact many of these policies, protect our drivers and riders, and we were well ahead of most of our national peers as well. So what do we need to do? We need to fix it first. We submitted a thirty-million-dollar competitive grant application to replace buses last month. Of a hundred and ninety-one revenue vehicles in our fleet, a hundred and forty-two have exceeded their useful life. This is unacceptable and does not meet the caliber of customer service delivery expectations. We received twenty-three letters of support from federal, state, and local officials, business leaders, and community partners. Ohio DOT committed seven-point-five million dollars in total revenue credits, having been briefed by me on the situation at TARDA. I feel strongly that support of the federal government giving TARDA thirty million dollars to buy buses equates to support of our future success. And I would like to extend my thanks to all of you because you were one of the entities to provide us a letter of support. Oliver? Next slide, please. Whatever decisions we make about the future design of TARDA will be made with the input of a broad group of stakeholders in the community. This process should not occur in a vacuum inside the agency, but must be inclusive to be successful. Now, where do we go from here? Several of you have asked us before about fleet diversification strategies, and I wanted to provide you a few photos of smaller-sized vehicles that we perhaps could incorporate into our fleet. And in the upper right-hand corner is actually, um, examples, this, these are, this was at Greater New Haven Transit where I came from. We did the same thing, was data-driven, uh, strategic fleet diversification that included, for paratransit, eight-passenger, single-axle transit vehicles. You see that on the right. Um, on the left, all the way on the left, uh, were Dodge Caravans. And then we also had, um, SUVs for our supervisor support vehicles and, uh, additional backup. So we definitely need to be looking at different types of vehicles. There are so many ways we can improve our system, and we're going to explore all of them. We need to completely reimagine TARDA, improve operational efficiencies, build a mobility ecosystem, focus on exceptional customer service, deploy advanced technologies, and increase value in our communities. And I realize there's a lot going on visually on this slide, but I assure you, it is all absolutely doable. From a timing standpoint, we're assessing our current situation and preparing, preparing the framework to build our team, prioritize technology projects, repair and replace our infrastructure, solicit community input, and seek new funding that is desperately needed to improve our service and support our bold vision for the future. Our top priorities are to reinstate Sunday, late-night, and early-morning service as soon as we are able, expand paratransit and on-demand service areas, and enhance service to major employment centers. Future phases of TARDA service enhancement will include more frequent service on high-demand corridors, circulator routes, and the return of additional service for major downtown and regional events, such as the Mud Hens and Walleye Games. Oliver? Let's talk about funding.
All right, this is my slide, and this is one of my favorite graphs. If you look at this graph, you can see the transit funding by states. And Ohio is very near the bottom at sixty-three cents per capita. Where our neighbors, Michigan, are around twenty-five dollars, and Pennsylvania is closer to one hundred dollars. One hundred and twenty-five versus our sixty-three cents. I think we can do better. Next slide, please. Um, so currently, we fund public transportation here with a property tax, actually two property taxes. And if you look at this trend data, you can see why this has been a little bit unstable in the past and why we are the only major transit authority in the state of Ohio to operate on property taxes. Next slide, please.
So building on the state funding situation and declining property tax points that Danny just shared with you, we have another challenge that must be corrected. TARDA has been using federal capital funds to augment the operating budget for years. Our future funding model must include a decreased reliance on the federal funding, uh, for operations so that we can properly invest in our assets. With proper allocation of these funds and aggressive competitive grant application strategies, TARDA will be positioned to provide best-in-class service in our community. Local funding trends in Ohio reflect the sales tax model in major urban centers and is considered a more progressive and equitable funding model. As we speak, we await final vote tallies in Cincinnati related to their recent point-eight-percent sales tax ballot initiative. We must have long-term, sustainable funding to ensure high-quality service delivery in our region as well. And in case you were wondering about what will happen to sales tax revenues due to the COVID-nineteen-related economic downturn, we're already working with our on-call A and E partners, AECOM, on a financial analysis of that situation.
So here is where we need your help. We need to get this question out to the voters. First off, we need to add Lucas County as a member of TARDA. We need to restructure our board. We need to give three seats to Lucas County as the new member and drop three seats from the city of Toledo. And then we need to take this to the ballot and ask the citizens if they would like to eliminate the two property taxes that currently fund our public transportation and adopt the model that all the other great cities in Ohio have, and spread that tax base out countywide with a sales tax. We'll allocate those monies to TARDA operations and allocate money to each member municipality for infrastructure projects. Next slide, please. Um, that is our vision for public transportation in our region, and this is our way of replacing an antiquated agency. This is a really good opportunity, we feel, to plan for our future and be proactive towards that and not reactive like we've been in the past. And I really appreciate the opportunity to present this, answer some questions from you. Um, Oliver, thank you so much for presenting this and helping us through. Means a lot. Any questions you have, we'd be happy to take them. Thanks.
Are there any questions from the board?
No.
How about people listening? Do you have any questions for TARDA?
Uh, yes, Chairman Crandall?
Yes.
Uh, this is, uh, Mark Herschel, Monclova Township Trustee. This is Chuck Herschel, Monclova Township Trustee, and also President of the Lucas County Township Association. I'd like to thank Mr. Woodcock and Ms. Dunham for their presentation. I have not had the opportunity to meet either of you, but several questions. You know, based on the last slide that you, Oliver, presented with the various income tax or sales taxes in the various counties, with this proposed half percent sales tax, Lucas County will be higher than four of those five currently, with those currently including the sales tax. Summit County is currently 6.75%, which is accurate, including the half percent for public transportation. Franklin County, 7.5%. Montgomery County, 7.5%. And Hamilton County, 7%. And those all include the public transportation portion of that sales tax. So is the half percent really necessary for Tarda to achieve its goals? Compared to other larger municipal counties around the state, this would put us just behind Cuyahoga as far as sales tax rates.
Yeah, this is a really good question, and I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name when you first started this. There was a little bit of feedback going on, but I hope we have the opportunity to meet in person once this is all over. And if not, certainly have a phone call to chat about some of this stuff. But we feel strongly this is the best path forward. We've explored a handful of options in the past, like around the time I was first joining this board. In addition to that, the Lucas County Task Force that was put into practice last year, maybe two years ago, but no, it was last year, they came up with that conclusion. And we had an independent financial analyst ask that same question, and they all came back with the 0.5. So that was our reference point for that, and that's why we feel strongly, both internally and from the feedback of our stakeholders, that that's the best path forward.
Okay.
Thank you for that question. And certainly, if you don't have my information, I'd love to give it to you when you're done, but keep going.
Okay. No, I guess a couple other questions that I had is-
Chuck Herschel, okay, I see it popping up. Thanks.
That in the last 20 years, Lucas County has lost, according to the census counts, roughly 27,000 in population, which is greater than the city of Oregon, which is greater than Springfield Township. That, you know, concerns about, especially in the current business environment, is this the best time to ask a sales tax increase? On roughly, you're looking at about 25% of the population of Lucas County, who is not a member of Tarda. So we're looking at a tax increase for 25% of the population of Lucas County. And sales taxes are really aggressive, that they impact the lowest-income members of our community at a much greater percentage than the upper-income folks.
This is a really good question, too. Part of that financial analysis was how can we create a more equitable tax structure that's based on use and not necessarily how big your house is or how much it's valued at? So we feel strongly that while this certainly will be a little bit more tax burden for some folks, the vast majority of people will see a tax decrease because of this. And additionally, based on your consumption habits, this tax will be more equitable and fair for all those involved. And to your first part of the question, population loss for our region. Being, you know, a millennial out of college for only six years, part of that decision in deciding which city to move to was where can I go and live my life while being on the cutting edge of some of these things? You look at the Portlands or the Seattle's that are eating up college graduates. People are going there because they invest in their infrastructure and public transport are a big part of that. I'm not saying it's the only piece, it's certainly not, but it does play a big part. I personally feel strongly that this is a big step forward for our region in retaining some of that and keeping our young folks here while allowing our senior citizens to age in place and not being stuck.
Well, and along those lines, and if I could call you Danny. In my Monclova Township, we currently have roughly 16,000 people, 16,000 residents, a number of what I'll call active adult, 50 and over communities, well over 1,200 active adult homes, the villa-style homes.
Oh, yeah.
And in my 12 years as a trustee, I've received a total of two calls requesting from Tarda service. Okay, so in addition to that, we have the, and this is kind of disappointing, we have Andersons located within the township, 700-plus employees. We have the airport, which is partially located in the township, and the Dana Corporation, close to 2,000 employees, and have seen no plans by Tarda anything to expand transportation countywide. This is, in a lot of my members' eyes and residents' eyes, nothing more than a money grab to keep the sinking ship afloat.
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to Kim to talk, yeah, I'll give it to you to talk about the transit side of things, but real quick, Chuck, just one point. I think there could be a lot of value for your active senior citizens in when we were able to reinstate the muddy and the Walleye shuttles. And additionally, now that Promenade Park is active and there's all these concerts down there, if we have the ability to easily shuttle folks to and from those events districts, I think that would be a real big value. And I'm making an assumption here, and I'd love to hear from some of your residents on that. But in talking with that public task force we had last year, that was one of the biggest points that hit. Kim, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. And I also want to offer that any of you, one of the things I think that has really stood out since I arrived here is my door is open. I actually answer my own phone. My assistant, it drives her crazy because I answer it before she can, but that's how approachable I am, and that's how much I want to have this really important and open dialogue. I would ask you to think about the future. That's what I've done since I arrived here. My life's mission and passion is public transit and what it does. And I came to Tarda intentionally because I knew this system and this community needed help. And to your point, you are spot on, right, about you're telling us about major employers that are in your community that Tarda is not providing service to. And when we talk about regional resilience, we talk about workforce development, we talk about access to jobs, we talk about why would someone choose to live here, whether it's a next-gen millennial or it's a senior who wants to age in place. That's exactly what we need to do together. And when I talked about a community-based decision-making, is we need to do phase two of a comprehensive operational analysis and get out in the communities to understand where can we best provide service to maximize, to be the best stewards of the public funds that you will place in our stewardship and make sure that we can move the most people strategically to the places that they need to get the best. But please feel free to, Oliver has my contact information. It would be my pleasure to have you here for a meeting or spend as much time as you would like talking about the details at any time.
Any other questions, Chuck?
No, Mr. Crandall, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chuck.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Hello? Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jessica Weinberg, 6512 Kerrytown Lane. So it's Toledo, Ohio, in the address, but it's Solana Township, 43615. I thought I would just follow up on a couple of the other questions. I, my, to the last question, I, my understanding was that the is, we mentioned the major employers at the township where there's currently no Tarda service. And that's, I think that's the whole, you know, as a, as a sale, as a, under the sales tax funding, it would be, I mean, I guess I'm asking this Dunham, it would be, it would be county-wide, so that would be remedied. Isn't that kind of the whole idea?
Well, when we had the, I'm sorry, when we had the public hearing for Andersons, and that was one of the questions we asked, that none of their employees, and this is when they were located in Mami and did have Tarda service, none of their 700 employees were utilizing Tarda.
Um, and then I guess the other comment I thought of when you asked about the the, um, the numbers in comparison to Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. And my thought is, that means, I mean, we, that I would hope we would want to have a transit system. You're talking about it being almost as high as Cuyahoga County. I would, I would hope that we could have a transit system that's like Cuyahoga County or like, you know, a large, major city. Toledo, what Toledo seems to really want to be like the major cities, the big metropolitan with the arts and all the, and in many ways we are, we have those institutions, but that's something that those major cities have.
So I'd like to address that, and this is maybe the part we really need to talk about. When I talk about reimagining Tarda and reinventing Tarda, what all of you know about Tarda is going to be nothing like what this system should look like. Did any, any of you who have visited, to your point, Jessica, other cosmopolitan metropolitan areas? My dream for Tarda is the service is so frequent that you don't need a timetable or a schedule because we're so predictable. We have the technology. There's so much technology that mid-sized systems of our size across the US have had for five to 10 years. It's not cutting-edge technology. The system should have been investing in those types of tools to make our service efficient, friendly, frequent, safe, security cameras on buses, automatic passenger counters so we can make data-driven decisions. So we could see this is a high command, high-capacity quarter where a lot of people are going to want to ride. So we need to be going every five to seven minutes, for instance. There's things called bus rapid transit, right, where we, we have real-time data signs, there's intelligent transportation. There's, we give tools to the rider so that it's a friendly and welcoming experience and people want to ride. We need to get a brand-new fare system. Smart card technology is out there so that there's fare capping built into the back of the fare card. So you never, right now, we force transfers. We make you ride from the outskirts of our service area to the hub, pay a transfer, get on a bus, go to, go to your destination, and do it all in reverse. That is so incredibly antiquated, I cannot even tell you. We need to get rid of the hub-and-smoke system. We need to plan so that it's north, south, east, west, cross-district grid system, right? Wouldn't that make sense if you were out in your town and you wanted to get to the town next, that you don't have to go through everything I just talked about? So these are, I know I get really excited, it probably appear I'm jumping out of my chair, but that's kind of what I want to do because that's what a great public transit system looks like. That's what I think this community disturbs. It's why I came here. And it just, even para-transit, Jessica, we have so much work to do there. The system I came from that Danny referred to earlier, in five and a half years, it was a smaller system. We completely transformed it with everything, technology, technical capacity, driven to excellence, customer experience, all those things I talked to you about. Those are like corporate values and goals, right, that lead the fundamental principles for everything else we're going to do behind it. And that's what I'm, I'm just passionately hoping this community wishes for and will give us the chance to give to.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for Tarda? Dan, do you have any last-minute comments?
No, I really appreciate your time. Chuck, I look forward to the opportunity to get to know you more and speak more about it and hopefully let your residents vote on this.
Hey, Kim and Danny, thank you for tonight. That was, you guys heard the first half of the meeting. Good to sleep you over there, but you guys did a great job waiting and you did a great job presenting, so thank you so much for being here.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Kim, do you have any final comments?
Again, I just want to thank everyone for being open-minded about what the future of our transportation system, intermodal connectivity, rail, inner-city bus, on-demand, it's in your real-time data on your phone. Use a corporate pass. Let's make, let's make connections with corporations and universities so that we have this mega ecosystem that people want to ride. And you get your corporate pass and that allows you to ride anytime you want, including downtown events. So just, I hope you appreciate my passion for this, and I'm looking excited to the future, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim, are you still on? Jim Caldwell?
Yes, I'm here, John.
Any comments you have?
I'd like to take the time to thank you and the Township Trustees for having us today. I feel very strongly about Tarda and the role that we are moving towards. I think Kim has made an excellent addition to our organization. Danny certainly has all of the marketing technical expertise and exuberance to help us lead into this next century. And so I would highly endorse and recommend that the Township Trustees give the voters an opportunity to look at the plan and to cast their vote, cast their ballot as we move forward to help to make Toledo a truly 21st-century experience. So thanks for having us, and again, it's been a pleasure for me to continue to serve representing Solana Township.
Thank you, Jim. I think we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, but I think we all realize with this economy coming back that Tarda would certainly be an important part of that. We'll move on in the agenda to the fiscal officer. First resolution is Resolution 2090, Township Appropriation from Undercover Balance.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Yes.
This might be a good time for these guys who want to check out and have dinner, they're more than welcome to, unless they want to hang out till the end.
Oh, I don't know. I can't tell whether to check for checkout. Okay, yeah, certainly.
Mr. Mahoney?
They'll miss the most, they'll miss the most exciting thing of our agenda, now the fiscal department.
Oh, Mr. Crandall, the Director Dunham, I believe, wanted to say one more thing if it pleases the board.
Yes, forgive me. I have a technical question. My understanding is you need to do of the resolution that we have proposed, and from a timing standpoint, tonight would have been the first time that we asked for that to occur?
I'm, I'm not aware that, Kim, we had, let me check with Mr. Al. We don't have any action on the agenda, do we? Oliver?
Correct. So what had been discussed by the board previously was that the presentation that would be at the second meeting, consideration on the resolution. And then I know Tarda has put together a schedule where if necessary, accommodate three meetings.
Now, don't we have, don't we have two actions coming up? One would be the addition of Lucas County, and another would be, or maybe they're combined, and another would be the sales tax, correct?
There is one proposed resolution that we submitted to the township, both inclusion of the county.
Well, Oliver, why don't we set, if it's one resolution, why don't we set up for our next meeting? If that's okay with the other trustees.
I'm okay.
I do see where Mr. Burrell is.
When do you need it, Tarda?
We need it by August, but this is why, you know, I think another example of showing you what the new leadership style is to be prepared and get to you early, right, so that we can have all the meaningful discussion we needed to. So we can come to you for your next three meetings, and that will allow us adequate time for the three rounds of hearing and still allow us to be our deadline.
I mean, I do think people are passionate about this issue, and it would be great if we could have an in-person meeting before we voted on this. And I, you know, but I'm flexible as well, but those are my thoughts.
Well, so if I could give you the, our deadline, our internal deadline is June 30th to have all of the municipal approvals. I will tell you, last night Ottawa Hills did their first reading. I will tell you, last night Ottawa Hills did their first reading. They chose to waive the three readings, they had unanimous consent on our resolution. And again, working strategically, and I, please believe me, I appreciate the in-person under normal circumstances, but in COVID situation, I am respectfully going to ask you that. I'm not sure we're going to be able to get an in-person and still get our schedule conducted as we need to.
I agree there. As long as, I mean, I think it's on the agenda, we've already got it scheduled, right?
Well, we haven't done the agenda for the next meeting, but we can do that, Oliver can't. It sounds like we should put it on our next meeting agenda.
And then the vote for the following meeting, which would put it the first vote in June?
Right, so the discussion that we had with Tarda, when they laid out their plan for, for three meetings was that the first meeting would be the PowerPoint, and then there would be a second meeting where there would be a video. And then the third meeting could be for the consideration on the resolution. Now, that structure doesn't necessarily prevent sooner action by the board trustees on the resolution. So as opposed to municipalities, the township doesn't have to go through the ordinance process. It can adopt the resolution at the time or meeting of its choosing.
Well, I'm here. Uh, plan.
I apologize if it was a miscommunication on our side. We had hoped that today, our strategic plan for any entity that we need three hearings is round one was the PowerPoint and a reading of the resolution with a vote. Round two is the BGSU condensed slide deck with a video. And second reading, an approval of the resolution. And then to come back for a third meeting for, I guess, what would be Q and A if there was further discussion to be had, with a third reading and approval. So I'm looking at what I think is your next couple of meetings. So if we came back on May nineteenth and then June second, and then the meeting a couple of weeks after that, would that work for this body?
Well, I think we're ready to vote, June second would be our current schedule, right? And I don't know why we buried that in.
Oliver, I think consensus is, stick with the schedule. We'll have it on our next meeting in May, and then we'll take action, the first meeting in June. Hopefully, maybe it can be an open meeting. If it can't, well, we did the best we could.
And then to, just to clarify, the three action process, my understanding that in discussions with Mr. Burrell, that may be necessary for incorporated municipality like Sylvania or Toledo. But for the township, because of its structure under state statute, three specific votes is not required, it would just be.
No, I'm aware of that, yeah. I, I think you and I can work this out Oliver, and we'll stay with the schedule we have, unless there's an objection from John or Neil.
No, I'm good.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Yeah.
I would like to move on to the agenda again, under the fiscal officer, and thank Tarda for your input. The first item is Resolution twenty ninety, Township Appropriation from Unencumbered Balance, Mr. Simko.
Yes, I believe that that is for the uh, transfer of monies from the general fund, from the general fund to the road and bridge for leaf pickup.
Okay, I'll move Resolution twenty ninety, Township Appropriation from Unencumbered Balance.
Second?
Mr. Chair. Just, just a point of clarification on Resolution ninety. This is a note from the fiscal analyst, the four hundred seventeen, eight forty-four is for account two twenty-three, three thirty-two, fifty-one, six seventy-five. And then Resolution eighty-nine is from account one oh one, nine ten, two four. Just wanted to read that into record before the trustees took action. And thank you for accommodating my comments and clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Okay, we'll call the roll, Mr. Genewine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty eighty-nine, Transfer of Funds.
That's, that is to transfer money from the general fund to the road and bridge fund for leaf pickup.
I'll move Resolution twenty eighty-nine, Transfer of Funds.
Second?
Mr. Genewine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution eighty-nine, To Establish New Revenue and Expense Accounts and Appropriate Funds.
That's in the EMS and for COVID care stimulus.
I'll move Resolution twenty ninety-one, To Establish New Revenue and Expense Accounts and Appropriate Funds.
Second?
Mr. Genewine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. And finally, the last resolution is Advancement of Funds, Resolution twenty ninety-two, Mr. Simko.
Yes, I, that, that is for the Trench Safety Grant Fund from the Road Grant Fund. The Road and Bridge Fund, and it's a little over seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll move Resolution twenty ninety-two, Advancement of Funds.
Second?
Mr. Genewine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Hearing of the Public on Non-Agenda Items. Do we have any issues or comments? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, number twelve, Open Discussion and Reports. I think Mr. Turner has a report or an update on the fireworks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There, the Working Committee for the Fireworks, which includes representation from Sylvania Township and Sage Art, has been in discussions regarding the July third fireworks show and whether it should be moving forward or perhaps postponed. As a bit of background, customarily Sage Art contributes five thousand dollars to the event. And then the city and township will split the difference to the extent that's agreed by the nations. So there, within a couple of weeks, there is, there is a timeframe for us to get back to Zambelli to let them know if the show should proceed or if it should be postponed or even canceled. We do know in our discussions that hosting the event at a place like Centennial Terrace would be impractical or very difficult, given the current social distancing guidelines. As a bit of reference, the city of Toledo has canceled its fireworks show, I hear, for the summer. The city of Oregon is continuing on with theirs. And then the joint fireworks hosted by Maumee and Perrysburg. There's been no determination on that that we're aware of. But just was, prior to the next meeting of this committee, referring this to the board for further input so that I can relay that to the working group.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Simko, you're, you're on the Rec District?
I'm sorry Oliver, how much more time do we have to make a decision on this?
Right, so less, less than two weeks. I believe that Zambelli is requesting feedback within, I would say, ten or twelve days at this point.
Well. Well, I, you know, I'm not sure, the Rec District, I think, would like to proceed, but I'm not positive of that. There was not discussed at the last meeting as far as I know.
Do you have any comment, Mr. Mahoney?
I, just a thought here, you know, like, you see like at golf outings where they have like a hole-in-one, you get a car. Can you get an insurance policy to, you know, in case we don't have it? If we were to commit to it, is there an insurance policy that if we were not, not allowed to have it, we could be refunded for that? Like through Pilot, Pilot sells a lot of those policies.
That's something that I could certainly check into. The date, just pulled it up, it's May twentieth, so it's roughly fifteen days before that decision would need to be made, before the, before Sage Art needs to notify Zambelli of any cancellation. So if it's prior to May twentieth, then the only charge would be some type of reimbursement for the reservation of the moving truck. The majority of the expense could be, but I could certainly check into the liability insurance question as well.
Do you have any input, Mr. Genewine?
No, whatever they want to do is fine.
Yeah, I, I, I can't imagine that the past agenda at Centennial Terrace will work, so I think they're probably, but I would go along with whatever the Rec District wants to do. And they can work it out with the fireworks company. Does that give you direction, Mr. Turner?
It does, thank you very much, and I'll certainly relay that to the working group.
Okay, the only comment I have under open discussion is, Mr. Turner's continuing to work on the update of the budget. And I've been talking to Mr. Simko, and we definitely think there will be a small adjustment needed in the budget, and we're talking about doing that in the early fall of this year to adjust our budget. Any other comments, Mr. Genewine?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
No, nice job Oliver, getting this all put together like you're doing here. This is a good way to do it. Not that I want to do this in the future, but it's a good way of keeping it going, so thanks.
Thank you, trial and error.
I'll move adjournment at six twenty-two.
Second?
Mr. Genewine?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thanks everybody for your patience, I think we're done.
All right, have a great night everybody, thanks.
Good night.